It's the Brainerd City Council, June 21st, 2021. Ms. Burgland, please call us to order. Or please give us the roll call.
Absolutely.
We are under.
Oh, Dave.
Here.
Stunek.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Pritchett.
Here.
Stingline.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is its hands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So you got your beer cooler back.
Item number four is the approval of the agenda. We're looking to approve the agenda with two additions. One is a presentation from the Water Tower Committee. That would be item, that would be right after.
It'd be six B.
And the second thing is on PNF, prior to any of the agenda items, it'll be a presentation by who's it gave, I'm sorry.
DW Jones, represented.
By DW Jones. So we're looking for, unless somebody has anything else, we're looking for a motion to accept the amended agenda.
Second.
First one, Pritchett, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Moving on to item five, this is the consent calendar. All matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
No move.
Motion by Chief Stunek.
Second.
Second. Second by Ted Erickson. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Burgland, please call the roll call.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yep.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. That consent calendar is adopted. Item number six is the presentations. Item six A is the Lakes Area Media Collaborative. Who's coming up for this group? Come on up, state your name and your address, because we're on TV, kind of, on the YouTube, and give us your 15 minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is David Henske. I'm Executive Director of Lakes Media Collaborative. My address is 21535 Rose Lake Lane, Ironton, Minnesota. First of all, thank you for having us present this evening. And I have board members here as well. Let's see, Chris Ford, Nancy Cross, Bill Satri, and then our other board members had prior commitments, so they weren't able to be here tonight, but they send their regrets. We'd like to give you a quick little presentation of what Lakes Media Collaborative is and has been. I guess my only regret would be that we weren't able to do this a year ago during COVID to clear up any inaccuracies or any things that may have had been questioned at that time. We were, we didn't realize we were going to be doing the presentation until after your packet went out, so I made copies, if that's okay, if I may hand those out to you.
You may. Just set them up here, we know the handout routine.
I bet you do.
Do we have these, Dave? Is this what you're going to hand out?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That's fine. That works. I have, I am.
Oh. If you want them in color.
David, go ahead and hold.
This is a media presentation. Of course, we want.
I think you gotta clear up that paper. Okay, slide, please. I'm not going to read through each of these slides. You have them in front of you. Some of these first few slides are purely for kind of informational purpose. Want to speak first about public access community television. It has been important to many local communities throughout our country. Federal government established laws that may require cable TV providers to offer at least one PEG channel. PEG is an acronym for Public Access Education and Government Related Programming. Next slide, please. Lot of words here. I'm not going to go through the, this refers back to the Cable Communications Policy Act enacted by Congress in 1984. And that specifically speaks to the whole concept of the importance of public access television as a tool for communities to use as communication. Lakes Media Collaborative was formed in 2005 out of sort of a series of events. The first one was Charter, or Spectrum, as it may be familiar to you now, ended their role of actively managing PEG channels nationally. So in other words, Charter was running the public access channel here in the Brainerd Lakes area at that time. So national policy basically went with, we have to provide the channels, but we're not going to actively manage them. Slide, or next, please. The Charter area manager approached ISD 181, and I, back up for just a second, I think quite a few of you know me, but I was the television productions instructor at Brainerd High School for 35 years. And so that's how I ended up being involved in this. The Charter area manager approached ISD 181 to take over operating the PEG channels. Their reasoning was, we were the ones that were providing most of the programming. Besides the city council meetings, we were placing the majority of the programming on the PEG channels at that time. It was determined that a nonprofit option would be the best. That way, it would be separate from the school district in that. And then the third item, another cable operator at that time, CTC Consolidated Telecommunications Company, that was when they began operating their cable service. Up until that time, they were simply telephone service. And so that created kind of an interesting problem in that everything that needed to go on public access television, whether it be a city council meeting or an area church service, would have to be delivered to Charter, and it would have to be delivered to CTC in order for that to happen. Slide, please. So that's where the concept of Lakes Media Collaborative came about, to serve as that clearinghouse or nexus for the two cable companies. Lakes Media Collaborative is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit collaborative in the Brainerd Lakes area that coordinated public access television along with other media communications formats in the Lakes area. Just a little aside, Lakes is actually an acronym that was developed way back 15 years ago for Lakes Area Keeping Education Strong. And with our primary focus being to further educational opportunities for people of all ages. So when we say education, it wasn't, a lot of people automatically think K College, you know, K through college. But this is an educational opportunity for people to learn about their city government. So that, we're using that broad term of education in that. All right. Some of you may have seen this diagram, and if you have, I apologize, but I've used this diagram for a number of years just to help people understand how this all worked. So we have Charter and CTC. So Charter and CTC pay 5% of cable television revenues to the city of Brainerd as franchise fees. Just an aside, that 5%, when Lakes Media was formed, the city was at 2%. And we informed the city that they could, as did most cities throughout the state, they could raise that up to 5%. And so it was at, in 2005, when the city began receiving 5%. So those franchise fees go to the city of Brainerd. Then the city of Brainerd would give 2.5% of the 5%, or half of that 5%, I should say, to Lakes Media Collaborative, who then, that's us, we operated the local PEG channels and then provided that, like I said, people could drop off church services, schools could, you know, deliver to us content, community members could deliver content, organizations could deliver content to us. And we did all the managerial and technical items necessary to then send a signal to both CTC and Charter simultaneously. So when you saw 181 on Charter, you were seeing Channel 8 on CTC, and they were identical. So that's basically why we were formed and our primary purpose. Over the past 15 years, Lakes Media Collaborative has provided literally hundreds of hours. I started going through our database and trying to, you know, and it just, the number of hours of programming that we've provided for the Brainerd Lakes area. And again, I provided this as an attachment. And we're very proud of that. You notice I've got it broken down into kind of some subcategories that include, you know, some of the areas of interest. So including a number of things specifically for the city of Brainerd, besides the council meetings and committee meetings that we did. Things like Mississippi Riverfront, walkable, bikeable. Some of you may remember the visioning sessions that went on back a number of years ago for the city of Brainerd. And, you know, we produced and televised and shared all of those with our community through our public access channels. So again, very proud of that list. And I've probably forgotten some things, but again, it constitutes hundreds, hundreds of hours, a lot of time and effort over the last 15 years. Okay, that brings us to the last two, excuse me, the last two and a half years, in which a perfect, though the only way I can say it is a perfect storm of events occurred. And I've got an attachment to try and give you a little bit of visual, I'm kind of a visual person, to try and give you a visual of, starting in mid-2018, up until pretty much the present, what has taken place in the life of Lakes Media Collaborative and its relationship with the city of Brainerd. Again, my purpose here is to, in a few moments, answer questions, but also to clear up a number of inaccuracies, I think, that took place leading up to the dissolution of our relationship. So if you have any questions, I'm not going to go through that timeline. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Again, the perfect storm of events, my health, the city hall remodel project, COVID-19, all at the same time. So it, in any other, in any other world, we would have weathered the storm, I believe. And we are weathering the storm. So if we could have the next slide, please. In 2021, Lakes Media Collaborative is re-energized and committed to continue forward. Our goal is to carry out our mission statement, which, as you can see there, is to develop a Lakes Area Collaborative to provide quality TV programming for, excuse me, I should have this memorized by now, that provide educational opportunities for community members of all ages. We're committed to continue doing that. We have the resources to do that. As I said, we're re-energized, we're excited, and we plan to move forward in the future. So at this time, if you would like, we'll entertain questions.
Thank you, David. Start on this. No, no, looks okay. Gabe Johnson.
Yeah, I have three, and this is an impressive list, and I loved the cable access channel back before I decided not to have cable television. But my one first and foremost question is, why should the citizens of Brainerd be the only people funding a collaborative that's doing school district programming, Pequot Lakes programming, Breezy Point? I mean, why is, why do we look to, only people of Brainerd should pay for this. Everybody else should get the advantage, while the citizens of Brainerd pay for it all.
Okay. And board members, if you care to, you know, jump in at any point in time, they may field questions as well. Good question, Gabe, or Councilman Johnson, I'm sorry. Former student.
Yeah, and I hope you record all kinds of.
Yes, and as Mayor Bevins was as well.
I was an amazing weatherman.
He was. Anyway, sorry, I digress. But your question, you're right, at this point, or at the point of 2020, that funding revenue stream had gone back to simply the Brainerd franchise fees. We had received support from the city of Baxter in the past, and interestingly enough, the door has been reopened with them, and they're interested in re-establishing relationships. As far as the school district, the school district, and probably your, one of your next questions, Mr. Johnson, would be our fund balance.
Very next question.
And that was, and I'll let our treasurer and our accountant speak to that. But we were, as a supporter, I should say, ISD 181, provided for 15 years, they provided the space, the studio, a share, a good share of the equipment that we used, utilities, my time at times, and I know I'm forgetting something, but, so there was a huge contribution on their part that's not easily put into a dollars and cents figure, but easily there. We also were very fortunate over our 15 years. I was successful in writing a number of grants, Blandon, Central Minnesota Initiative, Crow Wing County, just to name a few of grants that we received for additional funding for Lakes Media. And that, and we would, we would plan on doing that in the future, as well as talking seriously with the cities of Pequot Lakes, Crosby, the other areas that this Lakes area consists of.
Okay, because I would absolutely be on board of being part of a collaborative, but it kind of, it's kind of a joke that we call it a collaborative when there's one single funding source at this point, right? But yeah, my next question is fund balance. I just got your 2019 tax return pulled up here, and it says at the end of the year you had $721,915 in the bank, is that right?
That's correct, and you, 2020 would be more up to date.
Right, then I think we paid you half of 2020, but we didn't give you.
No.
Both payments in 2020.
No, we didn't receive anything in 2020. But 2020 would show the cost of the equipment and services that Lakes Media paid for in...
Some of these cameras.
In the cameras and the equipment that's used to stream and televise the meeting.
Okay, and then, and just another thing I noticed on the tax return, it also says you only got $68 of interest income on $721,000. Were you considering buying CDs or anything like that?
We, we are now.
Okay.
We are now.
And then, how's the look going for a location, a studio?
You know, if, and you notice on the timeline, I tried, I was brief. I hope you can kind of decipher my little notes there, but, you know, what happened when I retired from ISD 181 is it triggered a sunset clause that said, we would have to leave, we meaning Lakes Media, which only makes sense. And we had, you know, talked about that for years. That's also a reason for our large fund balance. Our, if you want to call it that, the father of Lakes Media Collaborative at the time, Superintendent Jerry Walseth, made it very clear and gave us marching orders into the future that at some point, the relationship with ISD 181 would cease to exist. And so we need to be prepared for that day, where we may need to either lease or purchase a place to live, we would have to equip ourselves, we would have to create a staff back. I've been a one-man show for a lot of years. We've contracted with some part-time help, but pretty much a one-man show. So that's, that's why, that's our, that has been our mantra for 15 years. Keep that fund balance, keep that fund balance fluid so that we have that option. And so when I retired, that triggered the sunset clause. ISD 181 was gracious enough to give us a year to relocate. Unfortunately, as you can see on there, my heart failed during that time. And I ended up having to go into the hospital for several months to await transplant. And during that time, because ISD 181 had to make a very quick decision, their timeline on their building project moved up. And so instead of having the full year, when I came out of the hospital, the IT coordinator informed me or asked me a question about, are we on the air? And I said, well, should be, I'll check. And we found that they had disconnected our head end and removed it. Panic, but it was immediate. I actually started, while I was in the hospital, searching for, talking to realtors and searching for locations. Of course, then COVID hit, we really couldn't, even if we found something, we really couldn't do anything. I was under a very tight quarantine because of my health. And then, once COVID started easing, you know, now we're, we're back actively searching. So.
If you have $1, I will sell you the annex right next door if you're interested.
You know, it's interesting you bring that up, Councilman Johnson, because your IT coordinator offered that space. He also offered office space on the lower level of this facility at one time. And, you know, that was, I think I've got that on the timeline, but I came in and did a walkthrough with him, and everything was, you know, wires were hanging and things were torn apart. And he said, well, you know, this possibly could be available or whatever. And then we put our heads together, and then he said, well, you know, the annex might be an option. We went over and looked at it, I came back and even looked at it a second time, and you know, it did. It had potential. And talked with him a bit. Jennifer was just coming on as city administrator, I spoke with her just briefly, the one and only time we got to meet face-to-face before COVID hit, and we talked briefly a little bit about it. But yeah, it, and then, you know, everything changed in July of 2020.
Well, I'm glad to see that it looks like you're feeling better.
Thank you.
And I am glad. And I'm glad you came in and gave us this presentation. I hope we can collaborate further into the future and have you guys get, I know we are talking to Charter to figure out how to get a hookup. Here, we have a hookup to CTC from city hall.
Yeah, and interestingly enough, and I don't have it on the timeline because it was so previous, I didn't want to, you know, a couple of benchmarks. In 2010, Lakes Media paid for the installation and the equipment to have CTC bring fiber into the city hall. And the reason behind that was Charter was providing a means out via copper. You know, and it became cranky and unreliable. And I spoke with CTC, and they were more than willing to put the fiber in. And so we, I think it was 2010, I was trying to find the exact dates for that, but we paid for that. Then I think in 2012, the second floor conference room, up until that point, we had been literally recording those meetings on VHS, on VHS camcorder, and then we replayed them back. And so we started with administrator vote, and then trickled into Administrator Goble. You guys, the council, agreed to move forward with updating that, and we kind of served, I should say, we offered payment for that. Teresa Goble at the time said that, you know, you, the city would rather do that, but we offered our services, and we kind of became the project manager for that. So I spec the equipment, ordered the equipment for the city, found the contractor to do the install and all of that. So those two items kind of preceded on the timeline, so I just wanted to make that point. So yeah, that fiber is a result of CTC and the fact that we had it installed.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have any other questions?
Thank you. Any other questions down here? Are you going to bring up your financial officer?
You can, I can.
No, I have a question of you, because you haven't mentioned this yet, and I'm on the cable TV committee, and are you aware that our IT director has made inquiries to move on to a different organization without you?
Yes.
Do you realize why that is? And I'm so sorry about your health, but you know what it looks like.
And that's why, that's a great point you make, Councilman Bevins. And all I can say is what I said in the slide, it was a perfect storm. And, you know, right now, our board has met, and our board has also, one of their items in moving forward is dealing with succession and creating the type of organization where this wouldn't happen.
And that was my kind of follow-up question is, you gave us a great history, I appreciate that, for some of us, it's a refresher, some of us old people, but what I didn't hear was moving forward. And you haven't asked us for anything, so that's fine.
No.
You owe us nothing.
Right.
However, I was surprised, if I had the same circumstances as you, I would want to, and I still wanted to make this happen, right? Because you don't have to. We don't have a contract, and neither one of us are under any obligation. I would have wanted to see a presentation, that's all history, great history, sad history. But from here forward, here's what, here's what we intend. I didn't hear any of that. Not, I mean, and you're under obligation to give me that, but I have a vote on the cable TV advisory committee, and this... Cable TV Advisory Committee and this one, and including what to do with that 2.5% if anything. So, I haven't done anything for a year and a half, but every day, the number of people that ask for this meeting to be on cable TV diminishes. We've talked about that on the Cable TV Advisory Committee and on this board. It is a potentially dying breed. In other words, time is, strike while the iron is hot if you want to do it.
Well, yeah, no, it's a fair question, Councilman Beavins. And, um, you know, I had an opportunity to meet with Jennifer and Sean, uh, here a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, that was where, uh, we kind of, uh, I, I think Jennifer had reached out just a bit before that to offer us to come to the Personnel and Finance Committee and to answer questions. And, and I know how this works. I've, I've sat back there for 15 years. Uh, you know, I've been to more council meetings than I care to admit. So, I know that, you know, had we gone to PNF, um, basically, we wanted you, and I apologize if, if you didn't get what you wanted to hear at that, at this time, but we felt, we just want to let you know that we're alive and well and we're moving forward via streaming, online, uh, services like Roku, Apple TV, Amazon Fire Stick. We have outlet for our, uh, what we produce. As well as, we will submit our programming to whomever becomes the, um, cable manager of the local access channel. And by FCC requirements, they will be required to play that, just like we were required to play the church services and, and other things submitted for 15 years. So, had you, had I known that? We, we didn't know we were doing this presentation until last Wednesday night. And, uh, so, uh, I didn't really have a chance, and Jennifer then was off for the, for the weekend. We didn't have a chance to connect, to really get a feel for, um, what it was that you guys would like to hear. That's why we wanted to leave plenty of time for questions. And, um, we certainly could have done that. But we want, wanted to clear the air, clear up in any inaccuracies which may have led to your decision. We realize that what happened, happened, but we fully intend to move forward.
Okay. Any other questions, Dave? Dave, thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
Can you introduce your financial representative and then we'll hear from...
Chris Ford.
Yep.
B. Johnson and Associates.
Perfect.
Treasure, all kinds of other things.
Excellent.
Questions?
You had it, Gabe. You start and I'll go second.
Well, my, my question was answered. They, their tax returns are accurate. I was just wondering if that's accurate, cause I don't think we should just abandon an organization that is still willing to work with us and has a fund balance that can fund some of the things that we want to get done. So, I don't really have any further questions, Mr. Chair. There is $700,000 sitting in their bank account.
Six, what? Just under seven now because of the equipment purchases.
Yep, sorry, I just had to...
Okay, and, and, and Dave and Chris, you haven't come here to ask the council for anything, correct? This is a presentation...
That wasn't, that wasn't the, the plan for tonight, no. It was just, just to get everybody up to speed to say, "We're live and well, we're more than happy to, we'd love to continue our relationship and all of that." You just like to be part of that conversation. And, uh, and whatever that's going to take, let us know and, and we'll...
Then I have one.
Sure.
I have one question.
Sure.
Nearly a half million dollars in the bank.
Yep.
You know what it looks like? Have produced no programming, which Dave said for years.
No.
Right?
Just the last... Just the last year.
Just the last year, for some length of time. So, I get asked this, and I apologize, I'm going to ask you it because you need to hear this.
Sure.
Who, who has the money? I presume there's a signer and the second, and it's none of my business, cause it's like, if, it might be Lakes Area Media Collaborative, but if you guys do nothing, what is there, there has to be some sort of rules as to what that money can be used for.
Yeah, there are. It's because Lakes Area Media Collaborative is a 501(c)(3) organization, the rules say that if we were to shut our doors, quit, quit doing what we're doing, that money can only go to another 501(c)(3) with similar, uh, mission. So, theoretically, if a different 501(c)(3) were created and took over all of this and we decided we want out, we could deliver that money to another 501(c)(3), but the, the federal tax rules are very specific that that money can only go to another 501(c)(3) organization. It can't, it, I can't give it back to the city, I can't, I can't, uh, give it, and one of the other things is there's no such thing as allowed, is called private annulment, meaning I can't give Dave a $600,000 bonus. That, that's, uh, against the rules, can't do that kind of stuff. And one point that should be made, a big reason for that fund balance being the size that it is, is because of this guy. In the last 15 years, he's never made more than $12,000 in a year for doing all of the programming, for all of that stuff. And if we were to go trying to hire a new executive director off the street right now, you're probably looking at a $50,000 plus, um, salary, uh, plus benefits and whatever. Well, if you take that times 15, his goodwill and his passion have created a fund balance, that along with us not having to spend $2,000 to $4,000 a month on facilities and, and utilities and that kind of stuff. We had that in our budget to start with, knowing that these franchising rooms are only 10 years long. At the end of 10 years, there might be nothing left and we're going to have to pick up our bootstraps and work from there. So, between Dan Voat and Jerry Walseth saying way back when, "Hey, you need to do the programming." We've, you know, they passed the, uh, the council resolution or whatever, that there was going to be some funding. You need to make sure we get the council meetings on. We need to make sure that, um, access is afforded to anybody that wants it and, but make sure that you mind your Ps and Qs and put aside as much as you can so that at that point in time, when something falls, you're going to have the ability to continue your mission and continue to do stuff. And that's kind of where we're at right now. But it's because of being very frugal and not just spending money for the sake of spending it, because we know we got more coming next year, that that fund balance exists, so.
Okay, I thought maybe, sure. Alderman Johnson.
I'm sorry, Kelly, I do have one more question. And it's, and it's not to Chris, it's back over to Dave.
Sure.
Kind of to Chris, I guess. You saved up the money, you knew you were going to need a location. You knew you were going to need equipment. Did you salvage any of the old equipment from the TV productions room, or are you pretty much starting from scratch when you get a studio location?
As, as I think everybody knows in this day and age, part of the reason why, starting all the way back with, um, you know, I went through the list of, uh, of, um, city administrators whom I had met with over the last 10 years, seven, I think. Each time we got a new administrator, I sat down with them to try and educate them and help them understand who we were and what we, what services we provided. But, um, one of the things that I always said is Charter put in the council equipment in 1995. And we were still milking that for broadcast up until, um, the remodel. I mean, I was buying stuff off of eBay. I was, you know, and as you all know, that kind of age on, you know...
Technical equipment?
What I'm hearing is you didn't take out the analog equipment from the high school because you do not want it and it doesn't fit the 21st century broadcasting needs.
Trying to retrofit it would cost more than buying new stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's why, when we, when we did the, the due diligence on the remodel project, we went with state-of-the-art. I mean, we could have gone a whole lot cheaper, I'll, I'll just be honest. But we decided to go with state-of-the-art, forward-looking.
We didn't want you guys pixelated when people are watching you.
Not this pretty face.
I have one question. Anything else, Alderman Johnson?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mayor Verdo. I'm sure it's listed somewhere, but I didn't see it. Who are your board members?
Uh, currently, there's myself, we've got Nancy Cross, Bill Satrie, Jill Casper.
Jill Casper.
And, uh, the other member that's, um, been offered a position and he's working it through his schedule, Steve Mau, you know, but he hasn't officially joined the board, but he's on, on our list, so that along.
And has been very...
Yeah, he's, he's been very involved with, with the Lakes Media Collaborative. He used to be the, um, host of a Lake Splash program that was a weekly, kind of, uh, kind of like what WJJY does on TV with the Community Connection kind of stuff. So, it was something that we produced a few years ago, so.
Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you guys for coming. It was very informative. I sure, I sure appreciate it.
Appreciate seeing you guys.
Okay, we'll look forward to great things. Next up is item 6B. It's a presentation for our Water Tower Committee. I don't know who's giving this, but I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Verdo and hopefully he can introduce who's going to do it.
So, uh, this will be Paul Skogan, who is the president of...
Paul, give us your name and address, cause for the record and let us know.
Paul Skogan, 13347 Norway Drive in Baxter. I'm here on behalf of the citizens to save the Water Tower Committee, and I thank you all for taking us on short notice. I do appreciate that. As you all well know, or maybe not, uh, in 2019, we applied for and received a grant from Minnesota State Historical Society for a set of plans and specifications to preserve the water tower. At the present time, Paul Sandy and I are working with Mike Lovato of LHB Architects on finalizing the work scope, specifications, and plans before submitting them to the State Historical Society for final review and approval. Uh, the plans will be completed on the, somewhere around the 15th of July. And at that time, we will reveal and submit them to the Historical Society for final approval. Uh, as you can see, the plans are there, and I do have copies here if somebody wants them. Uh, the plans consist of a new roof over the water tower bowl, using the existing structure to support the columns, beams, wood trusses, and a new EPDM roof and roof drain system. Plans also include restoration of the windows, tuck pointing of the brick areas surrounding the windows, restoration of the steel staircase, lighting, and relocation of the existing flagpoles. The Historical Society has 30 days to review the plans once we get them in their hands. If all goes well as anticipated, the plans will be approved and complete by the end of August and become the property of the city of Brainerd. As you can see, uh, as part of the final report to the Historical Society, LHB did include a preliminary cost estimate on the following work scopes. And that's this slide right here. Uh, the new roof on the water tower was roughly $200,000. Restoration of the stairs, another $37,000. Windows, $33,000. New lighting and flagpoles, $34,000. And then you got the construction administrative fees, the mobilization, the general conditions, and the contingencies. And for Phase 1, the total cost estimate came in about $403,000, much less than the $2.5 to $3 million that was anticipated in the original work study. So, since we last met, the committee has received a nonprofit 501(c)(3) status, and we have raised over $44,000 towards the preservation and renovation of the tower. Just last month, we received pledges for over another $24,000 and hope to make them public sometime in July or August. They want to remain anonymous right now, and so, we're kind of hoping to push that into the public eye sometime around July or August. And there was also another roughly $20,000 in there that somebody else is committed to, but we'll have to see what happens there. But because of COVID restrictions and limitations on gatherings, the committee had very limited access to the public and fundraising capabilities in the year 2020. However, as a committee, like everybody else, we did manage to raise some money and we successfully completed a food truck diner, which some of you guys attended, and women at the America Legion parking lot last fall. That event was well-attended by the public and we did manage to raise over $6,000 at that single event. And that money went towards the water tower restoration. Since most of the COVID restrictions have been lifted, the committee is again hard at work. Uh, we're looking at planning other community fundraising events and bringing public awareness to our cause. Uh, we recently completed a very successful day at Arts in the Park and the Brainerd 4th of July, and we had very favorable, favorable response from the public. Some other items we are working on for this year is a part of Brainerd's 150-year birthday celebration. We are partnering with Sheila DeChantelle and Stride and Seek, and we're having a scavenger hunt scheduled for Saturday, the 25th of September, as part of the Brainerd sesquetennial. Or, as I say, 150-year anniversary. We are also partnering, partnering with Matt Killian in the Area Chamber of Commerce at, as a luncheon with area business leaders to showcase our message and make our presentation to them as well. We have the Crow Wing County Fair in August. We're working with the Brainerd Lakes Area Women Group on a possible fundraising events and ideas. We're offering merchandise for sale at Visit Brainerd. And I did apply for a $400 grant through Amy Klobuchar and the Congressional Direct Spending. That's a long shot, but the word she could say is no. We're also working with Pete Staber and his field representatives on other available grants that we may be able to apply for. The State Historical Society does have another large grant application, which is due Friday, the 23rd of July, upon which we can request the full portion of Phase 1 restoration, the $400,000, or we would like to partner with the city and with us as the tower committee to help fund a portion of the grant through matching funds. This is very similar to what we did when we got the grant for the plans and specifications. As you can see, we have a lot going on in the coming year and beyond. Why save the 100-year-old tower, you ask? It's not about creating new, but it's about keeping the old instead. Preservation and restoration play a cultural role in our society and heritage as a county and as a city. Old buildings and landmarks teach us about history that happened before any of us were born and promotes respect for those who lived and died in different times and in different societies. Architectural monuments cultivate pride of our heritage, making us unique in this world. Without heritage, we would erase the stories of our past as if the people who came before us never existed. For Paris is known for the Eiffel Tower. Philadelphia has the Liberty Bell, and Brainerd has the first reinforced concrete poured water tower in these United States. Historic structures and buildings bring character and certain charm and identity to the community we live in. Architectural monuments are great attractions of tourists. Everyone likes to experience the spirit, spirit of the place, which most often is represented through landmarks and area architecture. Hopefully, these short points will make you think of this historic landmark not as an object of demolition, but as an opportunity of reborn and contribution to the local well-being of the city of Brainerd. Regret only goes one way. The preservation of historic buildings or structures is a one-way street. There is no chance to renovate or save an historic structure once it is gone, and we can never be certain what will be of value in the future. The, the reality brings to the light the importance of locating and saving buildings of historic significance, because once a piece of history is gone and destroyed, it is lost forever. So, what, last year at this time, you gave us a one-year ultimatum. You gave us one year to extend the, our committee and to try to raise funds and save the tower. So, it is, it has been that one year, so what I'm asking for is more time. We lost a year due to... due to COVID, and so I would like to ask one more year, two years, three years until we can get this project done.
150.
Paul, that's a great question. It should go to the whole council on an agenda, as an agenda item rather than the presentation.
Yes.
Which I have absolutely no problem putting that on there. But before we answer that, let's ask if we have any questions.
Yes, I'm ready.
All right. Tiffany, you had your hand up?
I do, actually. I have a question. I don't know if this is a question for you or for Paul Sandy, or how much time are, how fixed is this for our $403,000? How much time are we buying for $403,000?
Well, I've got grant processes in right now. And what I would like to say is, okay, last year, we worked with the city and partnered, actually it was 2019, we partnered with the city and had part of the state contributed part and the council, the city of Brainerd contributed part. So what I would like to ask is if this July 23rd, and I know it's short notice, if we could partner some of that money in a grant application for 400,000. When the grant application went through the first time, the University of Minnesota had a $350,000 grant in there, and that did not go through because it was too much money of, it was something like 394 grant applications, and 77 of those grants were approved. And they were looking to get their money's worth the best deal for the dollar. And us at the time, because we were partnering with the city of Brainerd, it showed that there was an effort and there was backing by the city of Brainerd for the grant, so.
I apologize. My question is a little different. If somebody backs up a dump truck with $400,000 and we do all these things, how long is the water tower okay before we need to do some other major project, the water tower, to fix it again?
Well, Phase Two would be fixing the exterior. And once we get that done, we get a roof on that, that tower's going to be around, I would say, for a very, very long time.
Okay.
It's going to outlive me, I know that. But it's, the base of that structure is solid as can be, because if you look at the diagram, they're using that base of that structure for the five columns to support the roof. So as of right now, we got a bowl that's brick lined, and the freeze thaw cycle is causing major problems inside and outside the bowl up top. So once we get a roof on that, we can work on the stucco and the exterior. Is that about right, Paul?
Yeah, I had pretty much the same thing to say. It's really stopping the active water intrusion first, which is the major problem, which Paul indicated. From there, you know, like he said, that water tower's not going anywhere. It's just the exterior stucco that's falling off that becomes the issue. We've addressed that for now with the fence. However, you know, like I said, that tower was built pretty hefty to the fact that it could hold 400,000 gallons of water. So it's not going to blow over anytime soon.
That's your question, Tiffany?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, since we're down here, any other questions? Chief, no? Okay.
One, I think a roof lasts about 30 years, so that's about the next time we're going to need, but then only you had to put the new EPDM back on it. You don't have to. It's an expense. It is an expense, yes.
I just want to say thanks for coming, and I'm glad that you asked us for the extension, because I was waiting for you to address it. I was worried you weren't even going to address the fact that your deadline was up in October of 2020. Here we are in July of 2021, working on an extension, and now we're.
Way better than the Lakes Area Media Collaborative.
But thanks for asking, and yeah, I suppose we should probably put that on the council agenda next time or something.
I think so, too. Any questions down here? Dave Pritchett?
We can go down the line if you want.
No, I called you.
Phase One, kind of a multi-part question. How many phases are there? Do we have any idea the cost of the other phases, and are they all interdependent? So if we do Phase One, Phase Two is going to have a cost in order to make it a complete project, are we already, is it in for a penny, in for a pound kind of a situation?
Well, first off, we've got to get the roof sealed. We have to get a new roof on there. Without a new roof, that water tower is not going to last very long, the bowl part of that thing. So we need the roof first. And I have not looked into the exterior stucco, and yes, that would be an additional cost of Phase Two. Once Phase Two is done, then it's just a maintenance program, should be a maintenance program from there on out, I would think.
Yeah, so from the original report, the Historic Structure Report, there was three options for the roof. One was, you know, the lightweight domed roof, the new lightweight low-slope roof, which I'm pretty sure this one kind of falls under. And then there was the original concrete domed roof. The original concrete domed roof was the one you were referencing, in which was in excess of about $2.4 million to actually recreate. So if you look at the cost estimates in the report, the Phase Two includes repair and rehab work to require to correct serious deficiencies of tower exterior. That is, subtract, it's a 2.1 million, subtract 1.4 if option two is selected in Phase One. So we're looking at about another, from this, it looks like 600,000 for the exterior repairs.
So instead of two and a half million to put a concrete roof on that thing, our 400,000 plus 600,000, we're looking at, given that report was old, to say we're looking at 1.25 million to renovate that tower and get it ready, and then perform maintenance from there on out. And do I have a maintenance program yet? No. But I will work on that later, as soon as I get the roof on there.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchett.
That answers my question.
All right. Chairman O'Day?
It answers my question, too. That's exactly what I was going to ask.
Yeah, so Paul touched on pretty much everything. The secondary part of it, the Phase Two, is the stucco, which, you know, obviously, you think stucco, it wouldn't be that big of a deal. But when you start getting as high up in the air as you are, and you start looking at those cranes and what they're going to need to do, the stucco needs to be removed and then replaced. And sadly, the cost of the roof is going to be half of the project. The stucco will be a large portion of the project as well. But the stucco isn't structural to the tower itself. So once the roof is on, there is time then after to make the outside stucco improvements. But there's a hefty price tag attached to it.
Anything else?
Just simply that, you know, Paul, in talking and saying, you know, the committee has been hard at work, and their plans for the way they wanted to address this, and I really appreciate the method that they took, first go to the public, reach for the small funds from individuals, try to get the five, 10, 15, $20 here and there. And the phase that they've gotten themselves into now is now reaching out to the businesses, and that is actually going pretty well. There's been two larger donation pledges, we'll call them, equalling about $40,000. So we've already doubled the amount of money that had come in at the beginning, just simply by taking it to that next step where, in the sales world, you've got to make the ask. And this group made the decision to wait to make that ask until they had a dollar amount that they could actually ask people for. You know, don't go and just say, we want to save the tower. Let's find out what the actual dollar amount's going to be. And sadly, that took a lot longer than we had anticipated.
Well, COVID had a lot to do with that, too, because LHB could not get to the tower during last year at all. So they got to the tower, I think it was last September, last somewhere in there. So it takes a year process with the Historical Society, once we get the plan started, so. Yes, it did take longer.
I just want to commend the members of the committee for having the patience to continually, you know, it seems like you're not making progress, but a lot of it is, you have to wait till the time is appropriate to make the next steps, and they've just been taking those as they come. So the group in working with them has been fantastic.
Thank you. Paul, just my last question for you, and then I have one for Gabe. Can you put together something in writing and bring it back to City Hall within the next 10 days? Seven days is better of what, put in writing what you want.
I can do that, yes.
For time, for monkeys on unicycles, whatever you need.
Okay.
Put it in writing.
I've had no monkeys in the city.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Well, we can put them in Baxter. Okay?
Got it.
So we need that, and you might want to hear the second question that I'm going to ask you. But then you're, and I think we're done. But Gabe, don't we as a city commit, didn't we already commit $300,000?
We have $300,000 in our capital fund right now.
Sitting there.
To tear the water tower down in October of 2020.
I'd like you to reproduce that motion, because I think it was, I think that was the intent, but it wasn't necessarily, I mean, it was also for the water tower.
It's for the water tower.
Okay.
Yep.
Excellent. I love it.
This could really be good. Okay?
First-time view from the city up top.
It's to tear it down if needed. And that was good thinking on Chairman Johnson's part. But when you place your thing, I'd like to, Gabe, if we could, put this out as soon as possible on your next available agenda, and answer the question, because it's really a question. If we move forward with this, we'd be in the Water Tower Committee, I would presume that it looks like this is a doable thing. And again, my commendations to the Water Tower Committee. This has really changed my perspective from a $3 million thing, all right, to a $400,000 thing that might stop the immediate damage.
Correct.
And again, I commend you for that. That's phenomenal. But I'd like to think we're not going to take $300,000 and tear the thing down after the new roof is up. Okay? So we have $300,000, and I'm saying this in an encouraging way, to work with Mr. Johnson so he can come up with a good plan, assuming this goes forward as to how, I mean, do we want to put it back in the general fund, or do we want to contribute to this? Because it looks like it might just be happening. I don't know. I'm asking you. So if that can be part of the conversation when you come back to the council with your recommendation, that'd be awesome. Anything else you have for us? Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
This evening. And again, thanks to Dave Penske. I may not have said thank you. So thank you for coming and bringing your board. You ready to go, Mr. Stunick, or do you want to take a break?
No, I think we should have more presentations.
Oh, you got your laptop.
I got bad news. I don't have anything till Wednesday.
All right. Next up is item seven. This is our council committee reports. Seven A and Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman, Mike O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, we just had two single items in our meeting, but one is a bus and one is a party, so it was a pretty good combo.
Bus?
Yeah. First item was a motion to adopt the attached resolution authorizing the purchase of the 2020 budgeted bus from North Central Bus Sales of St. Cloud at a total cost of $91,073 and zero cents. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, second by Tad Erickson. Any discussion? Mr. Chair?
The $91,073 is actually, 80% of that is covered by the state, and then the remaining 20% is split up between various communities. What it comes out to, this was a bus that was involved in an accident, if I'm understanding correctly, and insurance paid out about 13 grand of that. So our final payout is only going to be about 2,400 bucks for this.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution, so Administrator Burglin, please call the room.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunick?
Yep.
Johnson?
Yep.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, please proceed.
All right. Second item is a motion to approve the attached application under the conditions that the applicant submit their insurance certificate per the event application guidelines and request traffic control one week prior to the event, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, second by Pritchett. Any discussion? Mr. Chair?
Yes, this is the Sheps on Sixth Elbow Convention, held on August 27th to the 29th, from 12:00 PM on 27th to 12:30 on the 29th in the alley adjacent to Sheps. It's the 29th annual party that they've had for this, from what I can understand. You two should know, former grand elbows. But that is all I have.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Before we move on to PNF, Chief Stunick, you okay? Keep going?
I'm fine.
PNF?
Take a break in about an hour.
All right. We're going to hopefully all be home. Chairman, Gabe Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So before we get into our business, we do have the developers for the proposed 805 Laurel Street building here from D.W. Jones, and they gave a good presentation to us at Safety and Public Works, and I got really excited about it and thought, hey, this is only going to be a half-hour meeting tonight. You guys want to come upstairs and tell the whole council what you have going on? But here we are, but I'd like you guys to come up and give the presentation to the full council.
Take as long as you want. But you do have to, and I know a lot about this project, so I'm also very excited to hear more. Please state your name and address, because you are recording and such. And, you know, I'm really sorry that Gabe started this whole thing off by lying to you. Normally, he does it, but he doesn't admit to it.
Oh, okay.
Hey, don't be picking on my chairman.
All right. Oh, Stunick, you here? All right, thank you.
At least you're having a good time.
Yeah, well.
I'm Skip DeShano of D.W. Jones. My address is P.O. Box 175 Walker, Minnesota, 56484. Appreciate your time tonight. I will cut it back a little bit. Several of you have already heard this, so it's a bit of a repeat.
I can tell them the rest.
Yeah, we can just move right to the resolution and call it a night. But anyways, our project is 805 Laurel, and I'm going to talk just a little bit high level about the project. Andrew's going to talk about the drawings that are up on, preliminary drawings that are on the screens, and then I'll talk about, come back and talk about the resolution in the Tiff District. So D.W. Jones, we're, live in Walker. We've delved about 1,700 units in northern Minnesota. We also have a management company, which manages about 120 buildings and about 3,500 units from northern ring of Twin Cities to all the borders. We do work in the Brainerd Baxter area. We have not developed here. Jennifer has been bugging me for about five years to do something here, and the stars lined up this year for a project, and we're feeling really excited about it. But we manage in Brainerd Baxter, Marsh Run, Valley View Townhomes, Trail Ridge Townhomes, Ridge View 1 and 2, Oak Crest Manor 1 and 2, College Drive, and Excelsior Court. And we do have a site office in Baxter, which we hope when this building gets built, we would move into one of the commercial spaces on first floor. 805 Laurel is an affordable tax credit property that would have income ranges from 30% AMI to 60%. At the Planning Commission meeting that we presented, we did say 80%, and I clarified that with the Finance Committee, Personnel and Finance Committee, that there's been some recent changes in tax credit syndicators who buy the tax credits that we're trying to obtain from Minnesota's finance are hesitant to buy properties with that type of income range. And so we're backing that off. And so typically, in the past, it's always been up to 60%, and so that's what we're backing it down to. And just to give you a snapshot, in Crow Wing County, four-person household would have incomes less than $44,700. That would be the maximum at move-in. And the beauty of this program is it's a threshold income. They can get second jobs, they can get promoted, they can do whatever, and increase their wherewithal and not have to leave the building and/or necessarily pay more in rent. We're looking at one bedrooms ranging from 650 to 720, two bedrooms from 780 to 880, three bedrooms at 954. We are going to have an, which Andrew will explain, an underground garage. That would include a garage space. It would include heat. It would include hot water. So it would cover a lot of their out-of-pocket expenses that you would have living in an apartment building. Our building is intended to be a workforce housing project. You know, people that are working and having jobs are, we don't have a lot of subsidies that go along with this project. We do have some, and some of those subsidies we've reached out for because that helps, gives us points. And without points, we don't get funded. If we don't get funded, we don't have a project. So the whole idea is to get to 805 Laurel being up and running and a new addition to the downtown area, and that's what we're striving to. So, but we are a workforce housing project. We do have four units of high priority homeless units that would reside in there. Currently, College Drive, which we manage, and the HRA is an owner of, we, is it the HRA? Yeah, I thought so. Development, management, we don't always talk, but. Development, management, we don't always talk, but, um...
You're getting hang of this, Skip.
Currently has, uh, homeless housing units in there, and Lutheran Social Services provides the services to help those people to remain housed and help them through the, whatever issues they may have. We've also worked with the HRA to receive eight units of project-based Section 8 if the project would get funded. So there would be some units that rents would be adjustable based on a person's income. The, uh, the funding in Minnesota Housing Finance, as I said, is extremely competitive. It, there typically is about four or five applications to one that gets awarded. We, the applications are due next week on the 15th of July. Unfortunately, we don't hear anything until about the end of the year is when, at their board meeting in December, the Minis, that they would make an award. But we feel really good about some of the things that this downtown project brings that we don't normally get in, in a project that we submit. We are submitting three applications. This is the highest point project that we have. So of the three, we're, we're definitely shooting for a home run with this one. We're hoping anyways. If we were awarded, we probably wouldn't close until August, September of 2022, and that would put us to about August 23 before we would have people that would be able to move into the building. So it is, it is a process and it does take time. Andrew, if you want to talk about units?
Andrew, you'll have to also give your name and address.
Uh, Andrew DeShano, 7015 County 50 Northwest, Walker. So I'll give you a quick run-through of the, uh, building plans. Um, if we could go to the first slide there. So, uh, this is a site plan overlaid over the, uh, existing site. Uh, the building is four-story elevator building with an underground parking, 100% commercial on the first floor and 36 units above that. And so, uh, you can see the commercial space will have access from South Ace Street and Laurel, uh, directly from the site. Uh, if we go to the second page. So on top, there is the underground garage. It's 37 stalls. Uh, we will have bike racks in there, uh, and that is included with rent. The bottom floor plan, it shows the commercial space, and we can have up to five commercial businesses in there. The tenants, they would get access through the center there, through the vestibule into the lobby, and we have a few amenities for them in there. Uh, on the top is a community room that'll have a kitchen, a, uh, couches, tables, entertainment system that they can, uh, use and also rent out, uh, for free. It's all included in rent. Uh, and then there's also a small fitness room below that. Uh, if we go to the next page. So, uh, this is the second, third, and fourth floor, and this is made up of three studios, six one bedrooms, 18 two bedrooms, and nine three bedrooms. Uh, each floor will have a community laundry with a refuse area for trash and recycling. Uh, in the units, we have open floor plans with a full set of appliances, uh, that includes, includes dishwashers. Uh, the only difference is the three-bedroom units do have in-unit washers and dryers. The studios ones and twos will use, uh, the community laundry areas. And then as far as, uh, the heating and AC, it's going to be hydraulic baseboard, and then it'll be electric, uh, through-wall AC. The, and then if we go one more page. There we go. So this is the elevation. And so as you can see, we've got large storefront windows, uh, and entrances for all the commercial spaces. Uh, all the units have nice private patios. And, uh, so for the first floor there, uh, that they will be, it'll be a 15-foot sidewalls and that'll all be precast concrete. Uh, above that, for the apartment units, it's going to be, uh, panelized and stick-built. As far as the materials that we're going to use, uh, the commercial space will be primarily brick, and it'll be a mixture of horizontal, vertical corrugated, and flat panel steel. And that's basically the building. Any questions?
Any questions? No? Thank you, though.
Thank you.
Currently, our, our construction cost estimate is about around $12 million for this project, and that is with the commercial space being vanilla envelopes. They're unfinished and would need to be built out based on the tenants' needs. So in your packet, you have this resolution. The resolution is needed, uh, for our application. We have to present to the city council, have you recognize that and state that there's a need for housing in your community? We need to show that the city has something in the game here, um, and that's where the TIF comes in. And this TIF is, and I call it a soft TIF because technically, we have to go through public hearings, there's a whole statutory process, and that's why there's the disclaimer at the very end of the resolution, which, so you're, you're not really committing to anything, but I need to show that we, we've talked about a number, this is what we're talking about. This TIF is, the number that's in there is for the whole project, the commercial and residential. Well, we end up submitting to Minnesota Housing Finance, we need to peel the commercial out of the project. They don't want anything to do with commercial, um, nor do the tax credit syndicators. Uh, so we, we'll peel that out and it'll just be the residential portion. The... I think in your packet, you all received a memo from Baker Tilly. It's, it was part of the board packet. Do you want me to go into any explanation of that?
No, I don't thi, I don't think that's necessary, Skip.
Okay.
We all read it. We all read the whole packet thoroughly.
Okay. So I don't, yeah, so we re, we need the resolution for the application. This supports the TIF numbers that are in there, and we appreciate working with Michaela and coming up with that. And, uh, and like with all TIFs, you know, the, the, the tax value that's there now continues to go, um, get paid out to the school, the county, and you guys. It's the future revenues that would, uh, get, come back to the project and it would, we would take the present value of those stream of payments and it would become a source of our fund, funding in the project. So it would go in to pay for the bricks and the sticks and, um, yeah. And what else was I going to say about that? Oh. And, and the way she set up the schedule, the city does retain 10% of, of the TIF as an administrative fee.
Thank you. Anything else, Skip? And then I'm going to ask if anybody has any questions, and then we'll turn it back to Chairman Johnson for the, for the resolution. Any questions of Skip before we send him down? Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. You've still got four hours. Thank you. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, we have seven items on our agenda tonight, I believe. Nope? Yep, seven items. The first item is what we just learned about. It's a really exciting development project that hopefully will be taking place downtown Brainerd in the next year or two. And the first action is to adopt the attached resolution of support for the use of tax increment financing for a rental housing development project, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunick. Any discussion? Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, as, as was just pointed out, we're not actually committing a dollar amount of taxpayer dollars right now. We're saying conceptually, we approve the idea of a TIF district. We would, if we did go forward with that, it would be an entirely different process. The HRA last month passed a very similar resolution that maybe the HRA would be the TIF holder instead of the city of Brainerd. We haven't figured any of that out, but as was pointed out, this is part of the application to help increase the points, to help the project move forward, and that's why we have it here tonight.
Excellent. Any other questions? I, I have one, just to clarify, this, this would be if we did this, I pay as you go, TF4, they, they, they paid up tax and then we give them the increment, less 10%. Yes?
I, I think, I think that's what the city would prefer to do.
Jennifer Bergman is doing this.
She would definitely prefer that. Yeah.
Is he? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
All right. So we have a resolution. We have a second. We've asked questions. Any other questions? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunick? Johnson?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, Chairman Johnson, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next six items should take about six minutes.
And then we'll go down to the rest of the presentation.
Unless you want to add a presentation by the police chief? He's half the agenda. The next item is the Community Service Officer Regna, Resignation and Request to Hire. The motion is to accept CSO Hunter First Merg's resignation with regret and authorize filling the vacancy at the current hourly rate of $14 an hour, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stingline. Any discussion? Seeing none, um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next item is to accept Officer Brandon Anderson's resignation effective June 17th, 2021, and I so move.
Second.
I have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunick. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. This next motion has two items to it. One, authorize the promotion of Miranda Halverson to the Police Records Management Lead Position effective July 7th, 2021, further that she be placed on step five of the Police Records Management Lead Wage Grid, and further to authorize staff to start the hiring process to backfill the Police Records Management Technician Position, and I so move.
We have a motion by Johnson, is it, or second?
Second.
Second by Stingline? Any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
Just want to point out quickly, this is an internal hire, which I always love, and she was the Police Record Management Tech. Now she's the, uh, Records Management Lead, and she started out at the Police Department as a CSO officer. So she's really worked her way up through the department, and that is excellent.
Look out, Mike.
Yep. Coming for chief.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next motion is to approve the attached resolution authorizing the city administrator and mayor to sign and execute the master JPA amendment for the city prosecutor's access to the CJDN, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stunick. Any discussions? Chairman Johnson?
Standard resolution passed by the city so our city prosecutor can access the Bureau of Criminal Apprehensions Records.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunick?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yep.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
And Bevins?
That, uh, yes, and that resolution is adopted unanimously. Please proceed.
Thank you. The next item is to approve an MOA for accounting supervisor to perform accounting one duties. And the motion is to approve the attached memorandum of agreement between the city and IBEW Union, subject to the union negotiation allowing Ms. Jana Pernula to continue to perform accounting one duties, which is covered by the union contract until March 25th, 2022, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stingline. Comments? Chairman Johnson?
Thank you. So, uh, Jana was an internal hire to take over as the accounting supervisor, I, I believe, by BPU. She was already hired into that position, but the accounting supervisor is not retiring until March 25th, 2022. So this employee will be kind of having a, a long landing pad to learn how to do her new job, and we're trying to get an MOA with the union for her to also do the duties of her old job as she's learning. BPU passed this MOA. We hopefully are going to tonight. The union has not yet, so it may come back to us, but hopefully it does not.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other discussion? Uh, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign? That motion passes. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And the final item on our agenda is a resolution for authorization of submission for local recovery ARPA funds, and the motion is to adopt the attached resolution authorizing submission of data to the state to obtain coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds under the American Rescue Plan Act, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunick. Chairman Johnson?
This is a resolution, just, the government likes being very easy to work with, right? So they got the money from the federal government that they're supposed to give to us, but they don't know how much to give to us until we ask them to give us the money, and then after everybody asks for money, they'll divide it up and figure out how much we are allowed to get. And so, very simple process, very simple process, but we'll, we'll get there.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunick?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yep.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted.
End of report.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to item nine, which is unfinished business. Item nine A, committee recommendations by Mayor Bedeau.
Yes, it is unfinished business because the mayor's business is never finished. Uh, committee recommendations, I have the following recommendation. One, Andrew Shipe for one term on the, it doesn't say here, but the park board, uh, term expiring 12/31 of 2024.
I move to approve that.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Pritchett. Any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. And Andrew, welcome to your third committee. Item Nine B, call for applicants, informational, the mayor is the floor.
Yes, the following applications are available on our website, www.cibrainermnn.us. The following terms are available, expiring 12/31 of said year, Cable TV Advisory Committee, one term expiring 2021, two terms expiring 2022, the Charter Commission, one term expiring 2022, Housing Redevelopment Authority, one term expiring 2022, Rental Dwelling How, Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals, we should probably change the name of that, three terms expiring 2022, Transportation, one term expiring 2022, and I also have the following term expiring 9/7 of said year, Economic Development Authority, one term expiring 2021 and one term expiring 2026.
It sounds exciting.
Yes, it does.
And as Council President, I have one position on the Police and Fire Civil Service Commission to expire 2023 and the Ad-Hoc Committee is looking for the water tower, which we just heard our presentation this evening has two positions available. Item 10 is the public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. Time limits may be imposed. I will open the public forum at 8:58 and if there's anybody either online or in the, in the room that wants to address something we haven't talked about tonight, anything at all, we will close the public forum at 8:59 and go to staff reports. We'll start right next to me here.
Jennifer Bergman.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Just a couple of really quick items. I just wanted to let you know that I did attend the League of Minnesota Cities Virtual Conference. It was their annual conference, June 23rd to the 25th. Some interesting sessions. It'll be great to be able to connect with people actually in person. We've talked about ad hoc committees. We are meeting with those committees and we do anticipate having resolutions on the eight-two agenda. Just stay tuned for that. On Thursday, Chris and I will be attending the IAFF mediation. That is down in St. Paul and hopeful that it is our, our final mediation, but we will bring back more information when we return. Charter Commission meets on 7/14 and I had my Rotary Change of Gavel Ceremony last week. I am officially done as president of Brainerd Rotary and happy to turn that gavel over to Trevor Harding. And last but not least, I'm gonna let some of my co-stars on the, on the float talk about, about what is sitting in front of me. And I say co-stars, very purposeful.
Perfect. Anyone in particular I should know about to give the floor to?
I would say either Councilman O'Day or Councilman Johnson.
Anything you wish to add on the float?
We had a blast.
Literally.
The Fourth of July. Uh, we had a float that was based on the movie Fargo and its 25th anniversary, based in Brainerd mostly. But they called it Fargo because there was one scene in Fargo, I think. But we had fun with it. I was Carl Showalter, who we have a wood chipper, a, a snow thrower named after now in this town. Gabe played the, the biggest Paul Bunyan this town has seen. Since the original. We had Jennifer Bergman as Marge and she even was pregnant that day.
Nine months, actually.
There was, there was a slight mishap where she lost the baby for a minute when, when she fell.
The mixing bowl fell out of her stuff.
Mr. Attorney, any advice before we go into? Continue. He seems, he seems happy with this.
And we, and we did, we did have one, uh, friend of mine, a neighbor of mine, Ben Celine, dressed as, as Grimshrewd stuffing a leg into a wood chipper. So it was, it was complete. And I think it was, it was Matt, sorry, Matt Taylor?
Yeah, Matt, Matt Taylor and Chris Smith from Minnesota Makerspace put together a lot of the props for you guys, so.
And for this, we got first place, so. Good job, everyone. It's amazing.
All right, back to Mr. Bergman, anything else?
That concludes my report, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll just zing around the room. IT Director Strong, anything? Oops, I skipped. Chief Bestel, anything?
Just one presentation. Is there video?
You and I need to go talk.
Thank, thank, thanks, Chief Bestel. IT Director Strong? Nothing. Connie Helman, nope. Paul Sandy?
Engineer? Yep, thank you. Mr. President, I got two things. First, a little update on our Fourth Street project. So it was last week, they put the first lift of pavement on, on Phase Two. We're working on topsoil, seeding, that kind of thing, with the hope of paving the final lift by the end of the week. From there, we'll be doing some signal work, which is required to do the turn lane configurations that we have out there. They're still waiting on a mast arm. It's gotten pushed out due to COVID about a month and a half into mid-August, but we're gonna do something temporary for the time being. You may be seeing some potential road closures at Fourth Street for a few days to do that signal work on the south and north leg of Fourth and have just east-west traffic on 210 rolling through there for that time. That's just needed for the contractor to work on the signal lights above Fourth Street on both directions to get the new heads put up. And then you should have all received an email today regarding our TH210 project and two dates for a joint meeting between the City Council and the County Commissioners. Tim Bray and I have been working together to set up this meeting to give you guys a kind of exclusive preview of what MINDOT will be going to the public with. So the two dates that were put forward are August 2nd and August 9th. Either date works for the Commissioners. I think staff's perspective is we'd rather have it on the 2nd because it's already a council meeting night and it just might start a little earlier. The hope would be about four to six. Maybe get out sooner if the conversation goes well, but it would be held right here, but I'll kind of turn it over to you guys to discuss those two dates. To see if we can agree on one and I can forward.
Should we do this right now, I think?
Yeah, so we can get that information over to the county.
Okay, and the dates are?
The 2nd or the 9th from four to six. The second is.
The second is a council meeting, the 9th is not.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody have a preference?
Second.
Second for Mr. Pritchett with a nod, a head nod, affirmative. Comes up for more day on the 2nd. Okay, it looks like the 2nd at four o'clock here.
No, six o'clock.
So we get to be here even longer.
And Chief Stunek has no comment.
I hope we have a lot of time.
All right, anything else, Paul? Looks like the 2nd. You'll send us all reminders, I'm sure.
Yep, and that'll be a MINDOT presentation along with city staff and the project management team.
Perfect. Before I put, put onto David, those mast arms on Fourth, I ask this every time, so I'm gonna ask it again, to plead with MINDOT, heading south on Fourth at the Washington Street intersection. At one time, the turn lanes were designated, both with paint on the ground, which just doesn't last, and arrows on the sign, which disappeared. I've watched my mother-in-law from the right straight lane go left into the left eastbound lane on Washington. Bless her heart. We get that, oh, something, I mean, something there.
Yep, so they, so the temporary solution is to have one signal from both turn lanes and the signage. The permanent solution is two signals with flashing yellow arrows also.
Yeah, something, right? I mean, that, it used to be at least better. Okay, now it's, unless, you can't see the arrows, so, on the ground. Well, now you definitely can.
Well, your eyes are supposed to be in front of the car watching where you're going.
Well, listen to that. Chief Stunek gives another point. I didn't even know you were here. All right.
He spoke up.
Community Development Director Chansky for your, and you've got an hour for your report.
I'll tell you quick, Mr. Chair, just one thing. Governor Walz approved the Fiscal Year 2021 Environmental Natural Resource Trust Fund appropriations as part of the environmental and natural resource policy and finance omnibus bill on June 29th. These appropriations include the $2.85 million that was approved by the Legislative Citizen Commission of Minnesota Resources, or LCCMR, for the development of the Mississippi Landing Trailhead. We are working, we have staff are working with the LCCMR staff to have, get our final work plan approved. That has to be approved before we can actually have access to those funds. And we have to work with the staff and the LCCR, LCCMR Commission has to approve that work plan. We anticipate on having the, that approved and funding available by the end of August. We will be bringing back recommendations to the City Council later this month and we'll also be having some discussions with the Park Board as the intention, this will be a city park. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Excellent. Anything else? Nope. Chris Schubert, any charge director?
In preparations for union negotiations this fall, staff is starting to conduct a market survey for both wages and benefits for our city positions. Wanted to let you know that and also that we're planning on having a closed union negotiation strategy session on August 2nd.
And I haven't even started Christmas shopping yet. Anything else? Thank you very much and, and thanks for being on top of it. Our attorney, Joel Engel, nothing to add? That ends the staff reports.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
He got too many.
Chief Holmes, man.
I, I asked if there was anybody online. IT Director.
Oh, he was on there.
Oh. My apologies, Chief Holmes. Anything you'd like to add?
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. Nothing to add today.
Five words for the whole night. That's good, Tim.
Thank you, chief. Can you, can you talk to past Chief Stunek a little bit about how this is supposed to work?
You forgot him.
Didn't forget him, I, he wasn't there.
I'll get him in my office tomorrow.
Yeah, appreciate that.
I gotta run here.
Remember those words of wisdom? Praise in public. Criticize in private. All right. We are now up to mayor's report. Oh, is there more?
Eric.
Eric Sharptier. Chief Stunek, how could you miss that one? Eric Sharptier from the HRA, anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, Mr. President, nothing at this time.
Thank you. Mayor Bedell.
All right. I had the pleasure of attending the Fourth of July festivities here in Brainerd. And I just wanted to thank the citizens for coming out and having a good time. The city staff for participating in the parade. But most specifically, I want to thank our Fire Department, our Police Department and all the people that volunteered, also the fireworks crew for their work, both at the parade, which I will apologize, was probably more chaotic than it should have been and that's probably my fault. Parades are not fun and I don't like them anymore. But with the fireworks, we had a little, the snafu, where one of the fireworks decided it didn't want to go up in the air and it blew up on the ground and the speed in which things were taken care of and the due diligence that we had in order to make sure that everyone was safe and getting those fireworks back up and running was fantastic and the communication was fantastic. It was just a good, it was really nice to witness a situation where things aren't always gonna go the way that they're planned, but yet at no point did anything feel chaotic, at no point did anything feel like it was out of control. It was exactly the way it should be. You know, sometimes fireworks don't do what they're supposed to do. Sometimes you get a little fire on the hill and sometimes you gotta just get down there and put them out and, and reattach some things and it was fantastic. So I just want to commend everyone that was involved in that and just let everyone know that it was a fantastic event and I, as, as the end of this meeting, am on vacation for the next two weeks and if you need me, you do not.
What about your celebrity driver?
Yeah. It's Stunek. Take, take your own time. Don't take, don't take mine. This was a great way to end. We had a joke, we laughed and then I pushed my button.
Who gave you vacation time?
End of report.
Pat Erickson, try and bring some sanity to this room.
Not hard.
Well, so I'm in between committees right now, so nothing to add on that front, but as an observer of both the parade and the fireworks, didn't seem chaotic, loved it and I thought it went great. Congratulations to the winners and congratulations, it's not a wonderful fire, fireworks display.
Thank you. Dave Pritchett?
In walking around where the fireworks are formed, it was wonderful to see people together. It was wonderful to see people celebrating. I wanted to just remind everything, we are not celebrating the Fourth of July. We're celebrating the Declaration of Independence from Great Britain, okay? Our country, the birth of our country is what we're celebrating, not a day. So, thank you.
It's tough having a teacher on the floor. First he tells us we're doing the Pledge of Allegiance wrong. Thank you, Dave. Chairman Michael Day?
I have nothing to add, just had a great time on the Fourth of July, AKA Independence Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany Stengline?
Uh, nothing to add.
Chief Stunek, you still here?
I don't dare say anything.
Chairman Johnson?
I've got a couple of things. Finished on the Fourth of July. Congratulations to the mayor and to Brainerd Community Action and after taking a year off and planning this year's event in short order, in about a month is when everything kind of opened up and said, oh, by the Fourth, it looks like we're gonna have 70% of the community vaccinated and so it took about a month and they put it all together and it was as well-run as any year, I think. So, so good job, Brainerd Community Action. As for the fireworks snafu, you called it, I thought it was fantastic. Maybe we should do it every year. I was sitting there. I saw, I saw this explosion and then it was just silence and everybody's, the suspense in the air was incredible. And then the grand finale, it was, it was something to remember. As, as you know, last meeting, we had a thank you letter from a citizen about the actions of one of our police officers helping them out in an emergency and, and checking in with them. I just want to say, I read in the dispatch that one of our police officers rescued a woman from a burning home on July 1st and I think that's just amazing because I wanted that to be said and I think it's maybe gonna win the Best of Booyah Award, but he gives it monthly and that was July 1st. So we have an entire month for police officers to step up and do something better than saving a sleeping woman from a burning home.
What the police chief didn't say is that that police officer is going to be resigning and joining the fire department now because he loved it so much.
Two more things, the $2.85 million that Community Development Director Chansky mentioned is super exciting. I am very happy about it. I am. Mr. Bevins, to your excitement, I am gonna propose that we form an ad hoc committee for this park because this was really done up to this point by a citizens committee. And you have citizens like Rod Osterloh and John Forrest and Don Gorham and a bunch of people I didn't name who have been sitting there in that parking lot, on that road for 15 years staring at the river dreaming and I think they ought to be part of seeing this project come, come to completion. But we'll talk about that at a later time. And the final thing is BPU proposed some engineering services, proposed, approved engineering services with Bolton and Menk to the tune of like $120,000 for some preliminary engineering work on what is gonna end up being a pretty major project at our wastewater treatment facility in the coming years. The, the project that we're undertaking is going to reduce the amount of waste that we spread on fields significantly. Right now, it's about 3% to 5% liquid bio set solids we're spreading out on the fields. We're going to implement with 10, $15 million of whatever rate payer's money, a process that is gonna turn our waste into 16% to 20% dense waste cakes that we go spread on the field. So it'll take. The engineers call it cake. I don't call it cake. But, but it's gonna significantly reduce the number of trips we need to take every spring when we're, or all year round when we're bringing the waste to the farm fields and, and wherever we dump.
They do say the mayor's business is never done.
And that, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You know, I, I don't, I don't think you could get any more in the gutter.
Sewer.
All right, sewer.
That sounds like a challenge.
So, um, I apologize, I was out for the Fourth of July out of the state, but, so I missed all the excitement and it sounds like it really was, but I was there for Arts in the Park. So, and I haven't had, heard anybody mention that. I'm 20 feet across the street from the operation and it really seemed to be fun. I hope the vendors made some money and I hope it all went smooth and I want to congratulate. Sometimes it happens so fast, it's over and then we go on to the Fourth of July, but Arts in the Park was really exciting and heard nothing bad from any of the neighbors. However, of all the phone calls I received, I did receive one from a resident on Chipewa. And I'll bring more details after I talked to this resident. It came on a voicemail when I was out of the state opposing the Three Rivers Trail and they live on Chipewa. And the concern is that they were gonna be eventually or someday possibly bringing people into their backyard. Well, I, I'd never thought of it that way and I thought I'd bring it up because there's all sorts of stuff going on, all sorts of exciting things as David Chansky mentioned, but it's not all for everybody. So we haven't had any public hearings on this, so thought it was interesting to, to get that phone call. And lastly, Chief Bestel, can we, can we rescue Stunek from us? I mean, is there a police officer who would take a front page article and turn it into something positive that Gabe could talk about? Chief Stunek could become part of the Police Department? I've just thought. All right, that's the end of that. Item 14 is an adjourn. We're adjourning to the council workshop in the Fire Department Training Room July 12th at 6:00 PM. Is there a motion to adjourn to that meeting?
ISO move.
Motion by Pritchett, second by Stengline. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are opposed.